All right, we'll come to order for the August twelfth work session of the site plan review technical advisory committee meeting. Mike and Eric or Al, but we still have a quorum. And the first item of business is zero Lafayette Road for site plan review.
Good afternoon, hello. Joe Coronati with Jones and Beach Engineers. We've got Jenna Green to my right and Michael Green, both with Green and Company. They have this property under agreement. This is a wooded piece of land on Ledge Road. It's been, I guess, just a wooded piece of land for a long, long time. The appears it was created or surveyed back in the eighties, eighty-two. I know there's a survey of it that we submitted. It's not called a subdivision, but it's called a plan of land. I think it's the plan that created the lot. The parcel has the trail, the old trail that leads from Ledgewood Apartments over to the high school. And there's a small wetland at the bottom right corner, the southeast corner of the property. It's it's small enough that it does not have a setback from it. And the property's really only access is from Ledgewood Drive. And I understand there is, I know that that property, if you click on that part of your GIS even, it shows that that land is connected to the high school. And so we did some digging in the deeds, found that we, they were granted an easement or the right to access from Ledgewood to the property as long as the, I think with the limitation that the width is no greater than sixty feet, which would be fine with us. We don't need a wider access than sixty feet. The other things we noticed, we started, we connected with DPW to look into some of the utilities. And at first I didn't, I didn't even know if there was sewer in this area. I did not see anything on any of the plans that we were finding, but there is some existing sewer lines and sewer manholes. The ones you're looking at on the screen right there are ones that we actually located in the field. Dave actually sent us the GIS as well, which confirms the same location, other than we did find one additional manhole kind of on our property. And that we'll have to figure out correct right there that where that's, why that's there and where it's headed, coming from. Or whether it's an abandoned old manhole. We have not popped the inverts or popped the manholes to get the inverts yet. But that did also, it was mentioned that that line is actually the private sewer service from the high school to Route One, not a public line. So it was, a lot of the questions and comments that we got from Dave were really helpful and actually a good reason why we should come to a pre-tac meeting is to find out what the process is for those two items connecting into that sewer as well as our connection from Ledgewood. And in that email, I know David mentioned that they'd be looking for us having to do flow testing. I think for capacity concerns on that line. I don't want to speak for you, Dave, but that's what you said in that email and we'd just like to find out, I guess, how do we do that process with flow testing that, that line exactly? I can keep going if you want to do all the questions at the end. And then the, so the proposal is to do basically one U-shaped building. This is a sixteen-unit townhouse project. They, all the units would be connected to each other, one curb cut to access with a small loop around the site, around the, I guess, the courtyard, a little landscaped island in the middle. Every unit would have two-car garage except the corner units where the connections made, the smaller units on the corners. Those would have a one-car garage, so we are providing their extra parking space off the driveway on the right. Sidewalk all around the buildings. This is similar to development at Yonkins where a lot of the units front on different roads. They have a sidewalk running in front of them for doors, so there'll be sort of a front, a front of the, a front look to the building facing Ledgewood and facing the butters that are will, and a sidewalk around the site. There's also something we're showing on the plan, which is not yet constructed, which was a improve or an approval for the tour. When they did their recent development, changes at that site, that they were to build a new sidewalk and connection to the Portsmouth High School. So we depicted that as best we could on the plan. You can see pretty much for the crosswalk on Ledgewood leads to a sidewalk that then wraps around the cul-de-sac and then onto city property. All of that is proposed. None of that's constructed. There was a retaining wall proposed. That's that heavy black line. The sidewalk on the south side of Ledgewood is there. So they're obviously just connecting into that sidewalk and then coming across the street. So we're showing a proposed connection of that as well for pedestrian access. And I guess that's it for the overview. We, I guess, any info we can get on the, on the sewer access, how to do the flow testing, anything else, everybody has, that would be great. Before we get into the design of it.
Architect speaking. Can you, I mean, those two units in the corner where you have a single big garage door, backing out, and the other guy's back, very tight, right? Is there anyone to move that sidewalk to the right and then push those three, those three units more to the right? So that they're essentially just touching in the absolute corners of the U? And why are they, why does it have to be so congested right there? It looks like you have room to the right, right?
There's, yeah, it has to be, zoning, as we looked into it, requires a, basically we have to have one building for the site, or we incur, I think it's a seventy-five-foot setback on the property. And so if we didn't have that setback, we could do them as separate buildings. But with that setback, we were always more or less looking at sixteen units anyways. So we could potentially move that, we can move the building. We have a, I think the connection there is, we have fourteen feet of space. So we would have where, you know, basically where the units aren't numbered, but the, the corner units have fourteen feet where they could have a garage door and then a pedestrian door in on that side. But there'd be no parking allowed in front of any of the units.
Right. So right now there's room for pedestrian doors, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have fourteen feet, so if we have an eight-foot garage door, and then we would put the pedestrian door in the corner.
And then you're, you're trying to maintain a connection of what exactly for it to be to qualify as a single building? What are you trying to make, you know, like right now you've got like a five-foot overlap or six?
Six technically, yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we could look at getting, reducing that. It does push, the only place we can push is those three units can push more towards the the school property, but I think we can, we have, we have room to move it, you know, we can move it another three feet over.
To the right?
Yeah.
It seems like it'd be a little less congested. I mean, you know, two guys backing out at the same time, you know, it's, it's pretty tight. You know, if you can do it, great. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, for the, to, to come into this site, it would take a, I mean, it's obviously a small site, very close to the road. I don't know if you'd even, you know, want to pull a large truck into a site this small, but if it's a, but we can fit it if absolutely need to, yes.
What's the distance from the street for the front face of the back buildings?
Front face of the back building from Ledgewood is, is about a hundred and seventy-five feet.
Seventy-two. So we can't, we can't hit those buildings with our ladder truck from the street. It seems like an awful lot in a small space there. Are these constructed as are there, are there actual firewalls between like every two units or is it just fire, fire barriers? Is playing?
That'd be, be constructed same as Yonkins, right?
Yeah, these are just like all the other townhomes that you're seeing ours. So they do, you- It might be a different style, but- Two independent walls, the shaft wall up the center, two structurally independent walls, so it'd be a firewall. One, one can fall down, the other will still be standing.
With sprinklers?
Yeah. Is that how Yonkins was?
Yeah, they had two, two by, yeah, two by four walls.
Yeah, I knew they had the walls, so they could-
They were independent of each other. The only difference is you didn't have a, a parapet go up through the roof. The roof made the connection, you know, but.
Okay, so it's not-
So they could-
Like the shaft wall goes all the way.
To the underside of the roof sheathing, yeah. In theory, if there was a, you know, a structural concern, you could run a parapet up and then it would really be too separate.
I mean, literally the only connection's the thickness of the roof sheathing. It's not a big open cavern in the roof.
And that was fire resistant, fire retardant plywood that made that connection on the roof sheathing?
Yes, yes.
Is the, we held the, we held the buildings, obviously, they don't go into the setbacks, but we actually held it so the stairs don't go into the setbacks. We have to hold the stairs out of the setback as well, right, the rear?
Above eighteen inches. The first two steps usually can go in because they're under eighteen inches, but.
All right.
So one thing that's problematic with the zoning is that for townhomes, you can have eight units attached and then you have to have a separation of twenty feet. And so our, our ordinance, we were reviewing our definitions of apartment building versus gateway townhouse. And if there's a way to make these fall under the apartment definition, it could be one building. But for gateway townhouse building type, it has, it can be eight units connected and then there has to be a space. So I don't know if you can revisit the ordinance to see if you can just call this an apartment building versus gateway townhouse.
Uh, potentially, that's up to the-
Right, right.
Be the, the, so we can't, so maximum we can have is eight units attached, then we have to have a twenty-foot gap.
Right.
If we have a twenty-foot gap, then we, do we then have the seventy-five?
Right, then you, then you fall into the two, more than one principal building on a structure and then it's a development site and you have the buffer and the community space.
The primary buffer.
I think we need to take a look at the definition. If there's a way we can classify it. I don't know that we're looking to change the structure to flats if-
Right.
But there may be a, I don't know if you had seen anything in it, but we can definitely check.
We can go up to four stories, so you might be able to change it somehow and make it work as an apartment building, but you have to redesign it.
If the, if the townhouses are, I mean, just rented, does that count as a?
I guess you could get a variance. Yep, we could apply for a variance.
You could get a variance for the, for two variances. One would be for more than one primary structure or a parcel, and the other one would be for the seventy-five setback.
Well, well, that's, those are okay. I mean, if they, if they kept this configuration and got a variance to have more than eight townhouses connected.
More than eight.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, that is an option.
But if they just rent the townhouses, is it a, considered an apartment?
It's not that, it's not the de, the definition of apartment versus townhouse. It's the definition of what an apartment building is, yeah. It's not whether it's rented or not. It could be rented.
Right, it's a style of construction. A style of, very specific style of construction.
It's an eight-way building type. And do you have the square, I know the square footage is under ten thousand square feet, but do you have that square footage of the wetland somewhere?
I don't, I don't have it, but it's-
We just wanted to put that on the application when we do submit it.
Yeah.
To complicate a little more, the whole townhouse versus apartment thing. Recognizing that zoning definitions are different than the fire and building codes definitions, but uh, the only way I see where you get away from the requirement that we have aerial access to one full side of all these buildings is to make them one-to-family homes, which would be, you know, real firewalls after each two. You can have two units and a real firewall, two units of a firewall.
The, or the, is the shaft wall and the two separate independent walls not considered a real firewall?
Yeah, I'd have to look, we'd have to look at that.
You need a two-hour.
You need a two-hour and usually has to penetrate the roof for a given amount of distance.
Which could be just a parapet going, just continuing it all through.
Right, right.
And yeah, structurally independent. So it depends on other bills. So sometimes they do, they do those two walls, right, just so they can have utilities and stuff, you know. But probably not for townhouse style.
No, I actually think it is a two-hour wall.
Yeah. So that might work if you, if it, if you complete it to the point where it penetrates the roof, you have a parapet wall.
Okay.
It provides a much greater degree between the two.
You're against having like a strip apartment building where you'd probably get more back for your buck anyway, right? You could do one, you know, four-story, four-story building with multiple units in it. It's a different style of destruction totally. One, one block and a set, would that make it better for fire?
If it's one building, we only, we have to have access to one side.
One side, right, so you'd be able to pour right in and, you know.
Yeah, or if it's close enough to the street, it would make a reason.
If that's built identically shape-wise.
No.
But it's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, no.
Problem is, right now that U-shaped, so you pull a truck in and you can't get that ladder access to the front side.
Yeah, there's no, you know, the idea with, your typical apartment building is you have, you know, a common corridor.
Sure.
So you can get in and then you can get to anywhere on that floor just by busting the door down, one through one wall or something like that.
Sure. But as it is, Pat, so if we leave it just like it is and they make sure that you've got a structurally independent firewall between the units, are you still? You still not go to that, or?
I might, that might be okay. I'd have to look at the code for that. I think that there's a, I mean, then it's a one-to-family home sprinkler, you know.
Right.
That would probably be okay, but I would want to, I'll, I'll double check that.
Right. I would think firewall, I mean, I don't, don't know the regs like you would, but I would think if we've got a firewall between each unit and sprinklers, hopefully we're eliminating the need to have a situation.
Hopefully, yeah.
But this code's code, so I get it.
These do fall under the one, one-to-family in the IRC versus the IMC, because they're townhouses.
But they, if they're without the actual firewall, they don't in the fire, their department building.
And we may be able to gain separation between, you know, in that courtyard, because if we can move the stairs over the setback by a two.
Two-on-two.
You know, we, yeah, we can gain, you know, two or three more feet, maybe even more in that courtyard to help circulation. It played with the shape of the island, too.
Yeah, it's not going to be ideal no matter, you know, just adding a little bit of space still, but. First truck in lays a line from the hydrant and the ladder's not getting in there. The hydrant is just prior to this site, on the same side of it. Maybe on the side, actually.
Even though you can't really get the fire truck turned around, it looks like you got a ton of pavement in there. There's no parking in the interior there. It's just thirty-two foot wide on either side and that little island. Can you make the island bigger or provide a little more green space? And that just looks so pavement-heavy.
Yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll get more involved in, I guess, some of the detail, but that's typically what we try to get so somebody can line up and get into their garage and then back out without a-
Thirty-two feet?
That's what we've used, but we can, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Are you only required to have one parking spot for your dwelling? I thought you needed two?
One, one point three, which in September will be one.
So then the single, the single bay garage would work then in September?
In September, yep.
But we would also dedicate one of those spaces to the, on the left side, to those corner units. We have three visitor spaces, those little circles, have a V in them for visitor, and then we have two that would be dedicated. But, yeah, all the other ones would have two spaces in the garage. Yeah, I don't know if there is quite enough.
Dave, Zach, do you have any comments on the sewer questions they had?
To answer the hydrant flow testing, I'd say reach out to Mike Finn, dispatcher at the DPW to get that.
What's the name of the company?
Mi, Mike Finn, he's our dispatcher at the DPW.
Because I thought there was a sewer flow company that-
That was another one of his questions from earlier.
You'd previously had, I think, some sewer flow testing, a lot of sewer flow testing work done. Who would, you'd probably, I mean, if you're assuming you're happy with that company that did that?
We had used Weston and Sampson in partnership with Flow Assessment.
So who was them?
Flow Assessment.
Flow Assessment? Yeah, would you be looking to have us do the sewer flow test? I don't know how that really works. I assume you have to access a couple of different manholes and then, and you'd want the school to be open.
Makes a lot of sense, yes.
Harboring out a lot of flow off peak. So sometimes, starting September, we could do that work. And then the, you're looking to verify capacity in the line? And if there is, then we'd be able to tie in, presumably?
That'd be a-
It's private sewer right now, so.
That'd be a little bit higher up than us.
Would there, what would be the process for, is that county, city council would have to agree to?
Not really sure, because it's school department property, so it's school department. It's convoluted.
I did, I mean, looking out at the site, the next, there's a couple, there's a sewer manhole on our side of, where Ledgewood and Route One connect. Is that's the first, I assume the first one that's now public? Is that?
It's all shown on that plan, I'm sure.
I think it'd be a combination of the school superintendent and the city manager to start with.
Then I, if that doesn't work out, our choice is to then basically just pump up to the manhole on Route One, I presume?
Pump or gravity if you can make it.
Can't make it.
Then pump.
All right, there, good.
Maybe.
A couple of them are really deep.
Yep, they're deep.
That one's tight, I D T.
The, and then I understood the comment on water, which the, the water line's only public for a cert, certain distance.
To the hydrant, yep.
I assume in this case we would just tie in as close to that hydrant as we could on our side of it. That's after that hydrant, I think it showed like ten or fifteen feet after that hydrant, it's private.
Hydrant might even be on the edge of their property.
It's right next to their proposed driveway. Right there.
Property lines are way back, they're, they're way, way back up in the woods.
Right.
That's twenty-four, so this, this line's like fifty feet off the pavement for lots of stuffs.
So are you building it basically at the grade that's out there or are you building it up a little bit?
Well, I believe we'll end up having to build it up. You know, the road, the property slopes down from Ledgewood. The, and there is, I know some concern about stormwater, so.
A lot of concern, yeah.
I think we'd end up raising the site to match in, better with Ledgewood and then also providing us space to put under, you know, underground storage. Yeah, for the, for the stormwater.
Infiltration.
Infiltration into lawfall. Isn't that all ledgy there?
Yes.
Doug, we actually dug a bunch of test pits. The, there is ledge on the west side, for sure. As we get closer to that dentist office, it's very ledgy. Less so as you go to the right, then you have the wetland. So you can tell that the water, basically where the water-
That trail, that trail's not in ledge? That's just, what is that, old fill or something?
Yeah, it's old, exactly.
Broken asphalt.
Yeah.
Stuff from when they built Ledgewood, I think.
As unsmooth of a trail as you could have, basically.
Yeah. Treacherous in the winter. Is that black line that's off of your plan, but that, is that a retaining wall on the public ground improvement?
Correct, yeah, it was, a retaining wall shown on the plans and, so we just carried it over. Ultimately truly be needed.
Yeah, I think there was some back and forth on that, whether they need it. And then we'd ask that you not put lighting towards the wetland in the back of the buildings on that path. Could light the path, but keep the wet, lights out of the wetland area. It's already getting impacted enough on both sides. The buffer's completely gone.
It's got some lighting, too, from the ball fields.
And it probably has lighting from the ball fields, yep. We'll put it out pointing that way.
Big, big lights.
Yep.
I'm sure that one.
They don't stand a chance.
Probably not an issue with this one. Probably not an issue with this one. That's more a hole in the.
I don't wanna write it off, Dave.
It's a hole in the ground.
What do you do for trash? So you can't park out in front of those areas, you just put your trash bins out front there or?
Yeah, I mean, typically these, um, all of these private developments would have private trash pickup, so they'd have. They would, they would have a service with waste management or carousel, they would just roll them out in front of their unit and a truck would come around.
They store them in their garage until trash day, cause you don't want anything out there?
Correct, yeah.
What's that, rolling?
Rolling bin, much like you do for typical trash pickup, even in the city.
Except here though, they need to keep them in the garage, is the difference for most areas, yeah, yeah.
We, even in, even on our public streets, we can have and keep them in the garage. Yeah, it's just a look.
Sure.
Yep, makes sense.
Fortunately Eric Eby's not here, the driveway is coming out very close to the, uh, driveway parking lot opening. Behind the Tor Golf building, I don't know if they're too close together.
That's actually the new, yeah, the new development site there that's gonna have a lot of residential.
Yeah, a lot of traffic coming, going to be coming out of that as well, so. Have to get his opinion there.
Yeah, he may want you to angle it over to tie it together. Good to get his feedback.
Yeah, we definitely can't line them up, then it's onto the neighbor's property, but.
Well, isn't that city property out front?
But the, the lot line to the west of us is the, no, that's the dentist, there's a dentist office.
Right, right.
And then, uh, so we can't move any further west, but.
Not this property, but you're thinking sweeping it in.
To angle it, that would be unusual, but just, if there's a way to line up those intersections, it might be worth it.
How much is the set pack?
As much as you can.
The deadlines are ten foot seven.
Oh, okay. That'd be worth a call to Eric Eby before you come back and tap, before you decide it.
I understand.
Need to make sure it's a point. Pat, Pat brought something up as well, is that looks like on the left side, the west side of the plan, that last unit runs parallel with the setback line, right, so your overhang, roof overhang, are you allowed, are you allowed to have roof overhang with the setback?
Yeah, up to like two feet, I think.
Oh, yeah, there you go, yeah. Problem solved.
What's that?
You aren't in my town, cause I built a garage.
Right, yeah, it's different for every town, yeah.
Any other comments? Do you all have any other questions for Tac at this time?
I don't think so.
Enough feedback for, for now.
Uh, well, I guess I can come up with one more question. Uh, is Tor changing their entrance location on that southern side of Ledgewood, do you acknowledge?
No, I think that's staying as it is.
Alright.
Their development.
Well, you're showing their public realm path, so that, that's not the plan, you didn't pull it off their plan?
We, uh, yeah, we received the.
Yeah, they got this off their plan, but the entrance here is not changed.
For the full development, yeah. There was, I think, a separate plan set just for that public realm.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's the set I, I have, but the, uh, I didn't look at their full site plan.
I think it's, I think that's it, yeah.
I feel like that's pretty newly constructed, that parking lot.
Yeah.
Already anyways, from when they.
But they're changing, you know, building, building, expanding quite a bit in the back, so, but I think it does, that looks about right.
It's got a transformer square. On the other side.
This is a sign from our entrance?
I don't know what that is, but it's a.
I didn't see a lot of power going down the street, so.
Alright. That's a different question.
Yeah, you can look into that.
Alright, thanks.
Yep. I think it's an old boy shoulder.
It's street view, it just looks like a concrete pad.
An old bus stop or something.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for your time and help. Take care.
Take care.
Next.
And entering the room now, we have Neil Hanson from Time, huh? Ever gotten an intro?
Alright, we have one fifty Portsmouth Boulevard. Welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you, good to see you. Alright, well, thank you for the time, everyone, um. So we're here for what is now one hundred and fifty Portsmouth Boulevard, um. So thank you to DPW for helping us work through getting this, this lot readdressed ahead of the submission, um. So of the, the three buildings that, that we're proposing, um, they'll be known as one fifty, two hundred, two fifty Portsmouth Boulevard. So I'll do my best to, uh, use that numbering as I go through my presentation to, to keep everyone uh, on the same page as where, where we are on the plan. Um, so this is down at the end of Portsmouth Boulevard, uh, where the, the road is currently barricaded off, that loops through down to Dunland Way. Um, we're proposing, uh, two hundred and seventy-four residential units, uh, spread over three buildings. Um, as I just mentioned, it'd be one fifty, two hundred and two fifty, going from, from left to right on the page. Um, on this plan, they're, they're still labeled as A, B, and C. Of the, the two hundred and seventy-four units, we have a, the current proposed unit breakdown is, is on plan here. Um, which gets us to a calculated, uh, required parking of, of two hundred and seventy-one spaces. Uh, we are utilizing the, uh, twenty percent, uh, public transit reduction in the ordinance to, to comply with the, um, the parking requirement, the zoning, uh, we have three hundred and one spaces on site, so we're currently plus thirty, uh, with that twenty percent reduction. Um, the bus stop that, that we're using to utilize that is, is adjacent to seventy-five Portsmouth Boulevard. Um, as of right now, there is a sidewalk that goes from the hotel all the way to that bus stop. Uh, so as part of this project, we'll be extending that sidewalk, um, along our frontage and then there'll be pedestrian connections into the site. Uh, we'll also be rebuilding, uh, Portsmouth Boulevard, it's, it's obviously heavily deteriorated as it's been, been closed down for quite some time. So we'll be bringing that back, uh, to a twenty-four foot, um, travel lane and, uh, then we'll have, uh, parallel spaces, uh, along the, the frontage of the development. Um, there are thirty-six offsite spaces, uh, that, that are not included in that, in that parking calculation. Um, so in total, we'll have three hundred and thirty-seven spaces that will be, uh, constructed by the projects. Building, what is labeled as Building C, Building two fifty, we'll have parking underneath it as well. Uh, there's currently forty-nine parking spaces, I believe, uh, in the basement level of Building C. Preliminary for, for stormwater, we've, we've done some initial, uh, calculations, uh, we'll have a, a rather large underground detention system on the site. That will get piped out and treated with, uh, some sort of filtration unit. Um, that sizing and, and, uh, product selection hasn't occurred yet, but that's sort of the, the general, um, plan for, for treating the stormwater on site. Uh, we'll also be putting in new drainage, uh, in Portsmouth Boulevard, so offside, uh, offline, uh, catch basins with sumps. Um, and then as we work through the design, we'll have to, um, take a pretty hard look at the, the stormwater outlet. Uh, there's currently a couple that discharge across the street, um, in a couple of various spots, so we're gonna have to take a hard look at that and figure out where we can actually put a, likely a new stormwater outfall. Um, somewhere where there's a, a drainage easement, cause, uh, at this point, I don't know if the existing outfalls have, have easements or not. Um, so we're still working through that as well. Um, the grating you'll, you'll see is, uh, we're, we're kinda cutting back into the site. It's a, it's fairly flat along the roadway where the buildings are going and then it, it slopes up to a, a pretty significant hill, um, back towards the back of the site. Um, so we're trying to keep the development as, as much up against Portsmouth Boulevard as possible. One, primarily that, you know, there's a little, limits the amount of earthwork we need to do for the projects, even though it's, it's pretty significant. Um, but also that'll, that maintains that seventy-five foot buffer to the, uh, adjacent residential zone. Um, and we've tried to minimize as, as much as we can that grating up the slope. Uh, so that the parking sort is tiered up as we go through the three, three rows of parking, uh, with a wall, retaining wall between two and, uh, the rows two and three there to help, help get that grade up. Um, and then we have a, a path that we have graded up that slope, um, from the parking lot up to the top of the hill with a couple, um, sort of overlook areas as you go up, up the hill and, um, at some point, there'll, there'll likely be some benches and seating or, you know, the like programmed in there, uh, so that'll allow people to, to kinda access that hillside and get up, where, to where the, uh, the top of that hill, which we're gonna, um, maintain is, is vegetated. Uh, the utilities, um, there's existing, uh, sewer and water in, in Portsmouth Boulevard. Um, we were able to meet previously with, with DPW and, and, um, the sewer line will, will need some, uh, likely need some repair and lining work. Um, and there's existing water there that we'll be able to connect to. Uh, we've also had a preliminary kickoff call with EverSource, um, so we'll be working with them over the next month or so to finalize where the, uh, electrical connection for this, uh, project will come in from. Um, so they, they need to take, take our loads and, and do some work on their end to figure out the best path to, to get power to the site. Um, it sounds like coming from either direction is, is on the table for them. They just need to do the work on their end to, to figure out what's, what's the most efficient to get power to the site. Uh, and then we also included, included a, a preliminary landscaping plan. Um, that was something that was discussed pretty heavily when we went to planning board for a design review about how that, um, that hill was gonna be replanted, so they'll be obviously reseated after it's graded out and then, um, series of, of trees and shrubbery will, will end up being replanted on that, on that slope. So obviously it's pretty high level, um, at this point. The other area that we focused on was, uh, at the end of, of Building, uh, C, Building two fifty there, where the second driveway is into the site. We put a pretty heavy evergreen screening along that property line, um, as that's the closest a butter we have to the, the project. So we wanted to do everything we can to, to get, give a nice screening wall there. Um, one other thing that came out of the design review with the planning board was, uh, a number of the butters came out and their, their biggest concern was, uh, they requested having a gate at the end of, um, our project site. Um, so we have shown that on this, uh, site plan and we, we do wanna get feedback from, from this group on, on how that will progress through, if that will remain or if there's, uh, an alternative that would be preferred by, by Tac on how to, um, handle that, uh, request from, from the butters. So we are open to, to having a gate there, but obviously we'll defer to, um, what the city wants to see that condition be, uh, post, post-project. Um, so I will flip it over to Peter if you wanna talk about any of the exhibits you had prepared.
Yeah, if you wanna throw them up. Um, just great, so Peter with, uh, ProCon on the architecture side, working on the design. Uh, so obviously we're very early in the design process, so it's just, it's just white box massing, uh, at the moment. But what we wanted to kinda show early is just understanding how the massing can affect and, uh, you know, works with the neighborhood around it. So I know of maybe a couple of you were on the site walk last week and, you know, when you're walking around, you can notice how high the, the tree canopies are on the top of the hill, which is remaining in the project. So at one seventy, these are, these are elevation markers based on sea level height. So that one seventy is your high point of the site, which is going to remain, uh, and it essentially goes from one seventy dips down in the west there to one sixty-two.
So that's the, sorry, the land, not the canopy?
No, that's, this is the canopy that we're referencing here, so this diagram is more talking about actual visibility, so.
Line of sight.
What's about the land line of sight, so the buildings, all the elevators are based on sea level heights of the top of the building and top of the canopy. So you can see here from the neighborhood side, which is higher in land, uh, so you're still much lower than the one seventy of the tree canopies. And then our building is actually at the lowest point of our site, uh, by the, by the new Portsmouth Boulevard Road. And the height of those buildings are sitting at one twenty-four roughly, average. So you actually, by maintaining the top of that hillside, we're actually preventing any visibility to the building, uh, through the canopies to the two hour buildings. There's actually nice coverage that we're getting with the existing canopies that were, that are remaining there. And what's interesting too, like you can even notice on the left side, the, the hotel that's there now, only at four stories, ours at six. That building's actually gonna be higher than the buildings we're proposing due to the fact that that, uh, hotel's actually on a raised, uh, set of land. So by the time you can get to that building, it's gonna be sitting on top of ours as, as well. So we feel as if the, the building's kinda situated in the right spot on the site at the low point. And by using the existing canopies that are there now can help kind of mitigate any visibility. There obviously would be some impact on the east side with some of the houses that are closest to the project, but that's where we're using some of the screening effect in the planning, uh, planning plans that Neil was showing to kinda cover that. So that's kind of what this diagram was, uh, proposing here. If you go to the next one. So this exhibit, similar to the other one, kinda shows it more in a, in a section format. So this one, we're driving through the center of our site, which is actually not the center of the high point of the canopy. The high, the canopy height at the highest is about one seventy, so this is cutting through an area that's about one forty through the center of our site. So even at that point, you know, you can kinda see from this diagram that the height of our rooftop, uh, will be lower than the canopy, which will be then, you know, hidden from visibility from the neighborhood side. So if you go to the next diagram, and then, you know, we knew this was gonna be the case, but we just wanted to show it in a, in a exhibit format because our buildings are situated on the north side and, and I think this exhibit maybe came through on a comment from the planning board too in terms of shadows. But that, you know, the fact that our buildings are sitting on the north side of this, uh, site, uh, you know, I, I gave you, uh, a shadow perspective based on the spring, summer, autumn and winter solstice and you can see here that none of the shadows that we're, will be casting from the new building, which is represented in purple, will be cast on any existing buildings, only be on our, our site that we're dealing with, as well as the new road that we're creating. So this is kind of helping show that there's no impact of the massing in terms of shadows for the buildings as well.
Is that similar in the morning as well?
Yes, I, I, I didn't run all the typical nine AM, uh, twelve AM, thirteen, just, just, just because we, we ran a, a quick one at three PM all day, cause that one usually has the most shadow impact. But I did look at the nine AM ones and early morning, uh, there still was no impact based on the angles that the buildings were casting. So yes, in the winter, you may get longer shadows, but it's still not gonna hit the neighboring buildings as well.
And that winter solstice at three PM doesn't hit the residential building up on?
Correct, yeah, it's, it's, we're just lucky that the building is situated to the north of everything, so, and there's no other residential units north of us or around that Portsmouth Boulevard, so because of the way it's situated, you're not gonna have any, uh, actual shadow impact, which is great.
Except for the road.
Except for the road, correct.
It should be a dark assault water.
That's it for the architecture exhibits.
Yeah, um, so just, I guess, before we, we get into questions and comments, I just wanted to also note that we're meeting with the Conservation Commission tomorrow for a work session. Um, there's a, a wetlands to the, the north of the existing Portsmouth Boulevard, so we, we will have, uh, wetland buffer impacts as part of this project. Um, large, large part of the wetland buffer impacts is the, the construction or reconstruction of Portsmouth Boulevard. And then Building one fifty is also in a portion of that hundred foot buffer from the wetlands on the opposite side of the street. Um, so we will need to go through the, that well and conditional use permit process. Um, we also include an exhibit showing a historic overlay of, of the site, um, basically showing that this, the site was all, you know, previously developed, at least on the, the lower part in the, the area where in the buffer, um, where that wellend is now actually used to be a. Where that welland is now actually used to be a building. And then there's a couple of buildings on our side of the south side of Portsmouth Boulevard that are impacted by that now existing buffer. So we'll be meeting with them tomorrow for some preliminary feedback on the wetland CUP. We're currently working on a traffic impact analysis for this project. In our submission was our initial trip generation memo. We did traffic counts two or three weeks ago now and are currently working on getting that full study completed prior to formal tax submission. So that will be forthcoming in our next submission. And then we also included some preliminary water and sewer demand calculations with our submission. And the last thing we had included in there was fire truck turning exhibit. So any comments, questions on any of the materials submitted or anything else? We appreciate it. You guys have anything else?
Thanks Neil. Any questions or comments at this time?
When did you guys do a community space calculation of a ground?
We do not need community space with the G-NOAD, we're doing a
G-NOAD had its own community space, ten percent.
Not with the land transfer option.
Okay, let's double check that. Yeah.
What about the building coverage? It's eighty percent?
Yeah, it's a typo. Yeah, we
It should be like thirteen or fourteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was calculated.
That's an engineering math.
It was using the GSF of all floors.
Oh, okay.
So if you just deduct that total by six levels, it's about thirteen, fourteen percent.
Yeah, we'll get that correctly as.
It's about thirteen, fifteen percent.
Yeah, I mean, it was more than the open space, that didn't really make sense.
Yeah, it's a big site.
So there's a state law that just reduced, we can only require one space per dwelling unit. And we require one point three, so that changes and, or that goes into effect September fifteenth, I think. Would that, would you still just require, are you still planning on, or are you aware of that? If so, are you gonna keep the what you're proposed?
We are aware of it. At this point, we are not completely sure that that would be market rate.
Right.
So we feel like we probably need to stay sort of where we are.
Spaces or thirty-one?
Yeah.
Couple of questions on the truck turning template?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Can you show all the parking spaces on it? I think we might be hitting a couple of cars. It's hard to tell without the spaces there. And then the legend labeled Ford vehicle wheelbase and Ford vehicle overhang. Explain that to me. The red line.
Yeah, it should just say, it should just be vehicle wheelbase and vehicle overhang, the Ford. I think that just implies it's going in forward direction instead of in reverse. Because if we ran it in reverse, it has a different color, so say whether it says they're all driving forward. That's, I think that's what that implies, but we can, I'll just check it and clarify it.
Is the red being the wheelbase?
Yeah, the red's the wheelbase, the green's the overhang.
So a lot of times I see, and it's harder to read it, but we'll see, you know, multiple, four different color lines. You got the front wheels in one color, the back wheels another color, and then the front overhang and rear overhang. It just encompass all of that and these.
Would you like us to add that?
That, or just to know that, you know, this width is going to encompass both the, both the, all wheels will fall within this width. If that's the way it's done, that's fine, I just need to know that it's the way it's done. Well, I mean, in this case, we're not backing up for this, it's all forward. But we just need to know where all the wheels are and we'd, because it looks another, it looks like we're curbing some wheels here in a couple of spots, which we don't want to do, because we're gonna spend some tires on those trucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, we can take another look at it and make sure it's encompassing the whole envelope.
And then are we looking at yard hydrants or private hydrants on the parking lot side or?
So right now, there's a couple existing out, I think there's three existing on Portsmouth Boulevard, although one of them is marked as out of service. We are showing I think as of right now, we're just showing those to remain and nothing additional on site.
Where are the main entrances? I assume those are on the parking lot side.
There, so there's one, an existing one here. And there's an existing one.
Yeah, I can see, I can find the hydrant.
Okay.
Where are the main entrances to the building?
Oh, they're
Buildings, I guess.
They'd be on the parking lot side, yeah.
Are there any doors on the other side?
I don't
Probably not.
Yeah, there's an elevation difference between the road and the first floor on the roadside.
So we're gonna need hydrants on the parking lot side.
Okay.
That's where our, maybe our truck may end up staying on the roof near the ladder. We're not gonna pull those all the way around the building and into the door, so we're gonna be on the other side.
Okay. Do you have a sense now of how many you're gonna want? One, one-two, one per building?
Uh, probably one per building.
Okay.
You may be able to put him maybe it would get it down to two. Two or three, we'll have to look at it.
Okay. Like if we were able to situate it so that there was sort of one in between the sort of two sets of buildings, sort of like equal spaced apart?
I was thinking that, but I don't know if that will work. I'll let you know.
Okay.
When we get to it, just give me a call.
Okay.
It's a pretty big site. What's, does that, do you know what size that abutter main is on?
Ten AC.
Have you looked at whether you'll need a pump with the six stories, fire pump?
I think I saw Matt said he asked.
Yeah, I think we do need a fire pump.
Keep in mind the fire pump should be, have access through an exterior door directly into the fire pump room. That's it, it's just that.
Are you, so you're putting a trail, you're landscaping and putting trails on the hill. But at the top of the hill, that's still your property, right? And you're just leaving it forested? Are you putting any trails or anything in there? Can they go in there? What's the?
So there's a, there's a stone wall sort of right along the edge of our limited clearing. It's a little bit in from there and the intent is that we're not touching anything on the south side of that stone wall and leaving it completely as is.
But if the residents want to go back there and hang out or whatever, they can flash into the forest up there, they might make informal trails or will you keep them out?
I would say that that's probably a yes to that. However, I do know that the abutters behind prefer that they don't.
Okay.
So I wouldn't advertise it.
Yep.
I'm also not planning to police it.
Yep. Yeah, it just seems like a little flatter.
Yeah, it's a really lovely area up on top.
Space, yeah. And then the gate, any concern on the gate with the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's a need for it. It's just gonna provide better access.
It doesn't seem like that would be, people would be choosing to go the long way.
People are
Into the neighborhood to go through the neighborhood.
It's gonna provide a benefit to the existing houses, I would think.
It would certainly from a fire service standpoint, it would be a benefit to the existing houses, for sure.
Yeah, that came out of the planning board, kind of comments, but
Yeah.
I mean, we also, now that the name of the project is Portsmouth and not Dunlin. You know, I think we think that could provide extra level of direction coming through Portsmouth and not through the neighborhood. So we think just having the name change can actually mitigate some of those concerns of that gate.
The building's addressed as Portsmouth Boulevard will really help that, I think.
Is that right where the name change will be at that gate location?
I think that's where Dunlin becomes Dunlin again.
Yep.
It's kind of that end.
Yep, right there.
I mean, from a practical standpoint, no one that lives here is gonna leave going through Dunlin Way, it makes no sense. So you might, you might get, you know, an occasional lost visitor and then, you know, delivery vehicles.
Yeah, I think the abutters' main concern was delivery vehicles, Amazon drivers zipping through there.
Even they want to get to where they're going the quickest way, which is straight up and down Portsmouth Boulevard.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they're already making deliveries out there as well.
Yeah.
So it's obviously when you're adding this many units, there's gonna be more deliveries, but
Yeah. We prefer no gates, it's just, I assume you guys do too for plowing.
We left it to you guys, we didn't want to be the bad guys.
You mind if we blame you on when the abutters come out?
Yeah.
My name's Shanti Wolf. Jason Page, he's He went back.
And I know you had a distinguished wetland scientist out there to make sure, he stamps the plan when you I'm sure you will, but
Yeah.
Just always trying to keep that on there.
Yeah, Patrick was just mentioning, so time bond, we delineated the north side of the road.
Oh, okay. So it's two different wetland sites?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we were out there much earlier, ahead of the site being surveyed. And then, so it was just a timing thing to make sure that the survey got that, since we knew that welland was there from prior work.
Okay.
But I do, to your point, I think we will need a note stamped from, from actually both of them. One with the delineation and the one saying that the site was walked, no elands were observed. So it'll be
Sure, yeah.
It'll, it'll be
Whatever it says, as long as you have that.
Yeah, it'll have to be two separate notes.
Yep.
You know, that parking garage is lower than your infiltration area, from what I can tell?
We are not infiltrating.
You're not infiltrating, that's just
Detention, yeah. Yeah.
Lined, right? So you're not lowering your foundation with water?
Closed system. Yes. Yeah, the bedrock's too shallow out there, infiltrate.
Okay.
And the, Kate, I thought you'd bring this up, but I might be wrong, but are those more than ten parking spaces between your landscape island? Is that just the gate, is that just the gateway? Just gateway and out of this district? That's a requirement in this district.
I think that's a character.
Just character?
I think, I think so. We can double check that.
We should have it everywhere. Okay, you might be okay, you might be okay. I'm sure we didn't put it in G-NOAD.
That last plan was okay.
No, that last plan was not. Not landscaped enough, there's a lot of
Just checking.
Different setup, no parking on that. Sea of asphalt there.
Yes.
Is there any treatment proposed coming off that driveway to the north that enters into the welland?
As it looks like right now, we have the catch basins closer to the top of that. We can look to see how far down that driveway we can move them and still have the elevation to get it back into the onsite system.
Oh, yeah. Because the jellyfish are way in the other corner.
Yeah, they're on the other side. I think we looked at it briefly and I think we can move it down the driveway ways. I don't think we can get from the road elevation all the way back and around, but I think we can pick up more of it than we currently are.
Do you want to comment on the jellyfish treatments?
It's not our jellyfish right here.
Oh, recently we've been
Be part of any more jellyfish.
Recently, we've been switching to called something, called an upflow filter. We've seen those kicking around yet, but they're more cost effective.
Worse?
What? They're just more cost effective than the jellyfish, which are quite pricey.
Yes.
And the maintenance is challenging, it sounds like.
It's weird.
Especially if you're gonna put a maintenance building there to heat your personnel, wash them down every time it rains.
Did you just build X-Dad's parking lot?
Yes.
How terrible. Do you guys like a parking out of the other buildings? Or just the one?
Just the one. I mean, we looked at, I mean, there's numerous concepts that looked at, whole different iterations. With the grade change, getting a ramp down into the other two buildings, you lose most of the footprint with ramp. Either in the building or you lose a lot of the site with an exterior ramp and that would push us into the hill even more.
Yeah, it became too challenging and so the building C, that one on the southeast corner, that lot for the easiest access in and out.
And across the street at seventy-five Portsmouth, we've got a big empty parking lot at night. So we would have reciprocal parking, easy if it was overflow need.
Because the site's also isolated from the neighborhood in a way. Surface parking that's on the streets out, that's not accounted for in our numbers, like that provides additional parking for the process. We're expecting it mainly to be used by visitors or guests anyways.
I'm sure.
Yeah. So that should help as well.
Summer park. Summer park.
All right, anything else?
What do you guys anticipate in the best case scenario approvals? Approved project like a year or six months, five months?
I mean we could approve today. No, I think, you know, our hope is that we'd be approved by, at worst case, first quarter twenty twenty-six. And maybe be ready for breaking ground by third quarter, September-ish, twenty twenty-six.
Yep, thank you.
So just one comment, Neil, when you're designing the road currently showing two bump-ins along what you're showing as a parking lane. It'll get a consistent width through there without the bump-outs unless you don't want that to ever be plowed all winter. So we're gonna have bad enough time in there with the shade. So show that as a thirty-two foot road and we'll have an eight-foot shoulder on one side.
Okay, so just get rid of the bump-outs.
It'll end up, that's how it's gonna end up, so you might as well just pull those bump-outs out of there right now.
All right, if there's nothing else from anyone?
Great, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.